We welcome you all here tonight and give you thanks for attending. And we also thank you for allowing us to hold our meeting here. This is the Weber County Commission meeting, today, Tuesday, the 20th of August, 2019. We decided earlier this year, a suggestion from Commissioner Forre, that we move this meeting around the county a little and hold it in the evening so people who can't attend during the day have a chance to come here in the evenings. And we thought it was a great idea. So we ran with it, and here we are tonight. So we welcome you here, and we give you thanks for being here. Our invocation this evening will be given by Pastor John Melnick. We thank you, Pastor, for being here, and we really appreciate it when you come pray for us. And our Pledge of Allegiance will be given by Deborah Anderson. And the flag's here, so we'll go to that point. Pastor? Oh. Ah, this is your son. I missed that. This is the son, Pastor Melnick. Thank you for being here and doing this.
Dear Lord and the Father, thank you for this country and this state that we have, and thank you for the freedoms that we have here, Lord. I pray for tonight, as this council discusses and makes decisions, Lord. I pray that you would guide what they say and what they do, Lord, that it would be honoring and glorifying to you and to your name. Thank you for all that you do, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
Would everyone please rise and repeat the Pledge of Allegiance like me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, John, I hope you're not offended that I called you your dad. You've been called worse, have you? I always liked that when I got mistaken for my dad. Made you feel good. So anyway, thank you for doing that. Very good. Our thought of the day will be by Commissioner Harvey. So Commissioner?
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. I want to talk a little bit today to the thought. It's not, I don't want to go on and pontificate or do anything deep. I want to talk about our Weber County Fair that just got over here just 10 days ago, and tell you a little bit about what happened this year at the fair. First off, our junior livestock, that's kids. Now, last year, we had about 400 kids participate, and of those kids, there's, Weber County put about $600,000, $600,000 into the pockets of kids who raise junior livestock. Those are local businesses that invested back in Weber County youth, which I think is phenomenal. Those numbers are about similar this year, although I didn't want to report them because they're not exact yet. We still total those up, but there's a boost for the kids and everything, and it's a way that the youth can teach, or excuse me, it's a way that youth can learn how to work. They have to go through all different kinds of things, even in separation anxiety, that morning after the fair is over and they got to say goodbye to their lamb and their steer and their pig and their goat. It tugs at your heartstrings, but it teaches them. And then they get that money, and they can do what they will, but most of them put it towards college and education. And it's really a wonderful program out there. Overall, our attendance is right to near 49,000 people this year, which is really good. Last year, just to give you a comparison, last year, those numbers were in the, about 37,000, so we're up significantly there. The concession monies, or the monies that we make from the sale of concession goods, are up over 25%, which is also another good number. We had really good representation from our sheriff's department this year. The sheriff's department reported that the cars, even on the first day, were farther back in the parking lot than we've had in a long, long time, and the numbers are here to prove it. We had some new things this year. One of the things, and it's the first time it ever happened in the state of Utah, but we had the Indian Relay Races. Now, I'm being politically correct when I say Indian Relay Races, because that's what they want to be called. We asked about that. And they'd always been up at Blackfoot and some of these other places, but they'd never been in Utah, so they came down and run that Weber Downs, or we track at the Weber County Fairgrounds. We had nearly 2,000 people show up for the fair, which was wonderful. First time here. We had a lot of positive feedback, including some of the other things we did, which were the horse pulls, the bull fights, and the bull fights were like the rodeo clowns when cowboys get knocked off the poles, they did that. We had great demolition derby amongst a lot of other things. It was really a good, kid-friendly fair. The fair board had said that our rodeo that was there that night, they'd never seen more spectators at that outdoor rodeo than we had that night at the fair, so that was really, really good. Our RV park was sold out, so that's another revenue source for Weber County residents. We had over, this year, we sell sponsorships to the fair, so you can sponsor and do a lot of things. Last year, we had about $57,000 in cash and trade for the fair. This year, we had over $100,000 in cash and trade for the fair, so a lot of good numbers. So Commissioners, my thought is, it's reflective, I think, that we're doing some great things at the fair, and I'd really, with this thought, I'd love to have both your comments added to that, because it was, we all had unique experiences out at the fair this year.
Commissioner Forre, go ahead.
Well, I think I'm on record to say it was, in my opinion, one of the best fairs I've ever attended. And obviously, the Indian Relay Races, that I've actually seen in southern, southeast Idaho before, but been quite a while, were a highlight, along with, and I've always supported the auction on Saturday morning with the kids, and it's a great opportunity for these young children, young adults in some cases, in Weber County, to show what hard work and perseverance is, will bring them in terms of dollars toward their college education. And I think that you saw the community outreach during that auction to, and hopefully, I haven't seen the final numbers on that, but it's great to see these people in Weber County and these kids, especially with FFA, and I was in FFA back in ancient history, but...
Hold on. I went to school with you, and I don't remember you in FFA.
I was, I was right there. I even have the jacket. See, I've got people in the audience that will, you know, raise their hand. Yeah. And so, anyway, Commissioner, I appreciate that. And everyone that I had the opportunity to speak with, which was quite a few, thought that this was a great example of what Weber County could put forward for the citizens of Weber County, so I appreciate. And I've said before, our staff, Ashton, Marty, Jennifer, everybody involved with the Golden Spike Arena, did an excellent job of making sure that we put our best foot forward. So anyway, that's my comments.
Thank you. That's a great comment. You know, I agree with Commissioner Forre. It was a wonderful affair. We did good, and you kind of soft-soled those kids a little bit. When you're sitting there bidding on these animals that these kids are bringing through, and big old tears running down their face and their cheeks, and they know where that animal's heading when the minute they walk out that door, and they are just sad, sad. I tell you, of course, the minute you get somebody crying, the price goes up, right? Because folks feel really sad for them. It's traumatic in their life, and it's fun to watch, actually. It just shows you what heart these kids put into raising these animals, and how important it is to them. So I really enjoyed it, too, and it was great. Thank you, Commissioner. Harvey, we appreciate it. That's a great thought of the day, a great comment. All right, we now go to a point in our meeting where we have a public comment, and we do that at the front of the meeting, so people can address us and we can actually speak back to them, instead of just having them say something at the end of the meeting and not get an actual response. So we're going to go to that, but before we do, there's two things I want to mention tonight. One of them is the gondola. A fair amount of you folks, we have questions of us of the gondola, and we want to tell you what we know about the gondola tonight. And our total knowledge is the fact that when it got presented at the committees in Washington, DC, where it would go for approval, they got pulled off just prior to going to that committee hearing. And that's what we know. We don't know why. We have suspicions of why, but we don't know why. We don't know why it got pulled off. We don't know what happened. They've never officially talked to us from that day on. They've not come back and visited with any of us, right?
No.
Yeah, and so that's our total knowledge. We just know that it got pulled off on the front end of the hearing of that committee. So there you go. Second thing we wanted to mention, I wanted to mention tonight, is we're starting to get a few calls on the landfill, Promontory Point, that we've been considering sending our garbage to. It officially isn't a county issue. It's the state of Utah. They're the ones who approve landfills, and that landfill's been approved. And so we don't have anything to do with the approval process, with anything other than to say, yeah, we'll send our garbage there, and it would save the county, just so you know, $600,000 a year to send our garbage to that landfill. Now, that's the positive side of this. The negative side is we have a five-year contract with Republic Services, and we've been meeting with our general counsel to see if we could get out of that contract. There's a year and a half left in that contract, and we would like to get out of that. Well, I had a meeting with him last Friday, right there, Mr. Crockett, and he tells me that that contract is enforceable, that it's a good contract, and it's kind of a crazy contract, but anyway, they tell us that it's enforceable, and they don't think that the county can walk away from that contract. So that being the case, now, we're still looking into a couple of things, but I don't anticipate we'll find anything much different than what Mr. Crockett has told us. So that being the case, I anticipate that we will stay where we are for the next year and a half, and that this will come up in the future sometime. But today, I anticipate that is a dead issue. So there you go. And if you want to comment on that, you're welcome to come up and talk to us about it, but that's our official statement of where we are today. So anybody who'd like to come up and talk to us or comment, please, feel free to come and just state your name and where you live. That's all we care.
Randy Nguyen. I'm a North Ogden resident, and first of all, I'd like to say, I like your idea. I appreciate this, where you come out to the local folks at more convenient times as well. And just to go on the record, I think I speak for a lot of folks in North Ogden, in that we are very concerned about that gondola thing, and we're not in favor of it. And we would appreciate any wind you get of it to express that to folks and pass that knowledge along. Anyway, thanks for being here.
Thank you, Randy.
Lynn Satterfway, I live in North Ogden. And thanks to the three of you here to work with the fair and the experience and service with the legislature. Brings a lot to our commission. Thank you. And so I'll be very brief. I'm interested in the gondola, because I can walk there in about five minutes from my home, and I am a mayoral candidate here, so there's a lot of people asking about it. And I'll try to be very brief. It's really simply this. I've talked to two of the landowners that I think, between the two of them, could probably support this thing, and they're quite willing to sell. And the reality I see is that, and I've expressed this briefly to a couple of you, that this whole thing could be approved by the Forest Service and by the county, and it could be right on our doorstep, and we would have maybe nothing to do with it. And so our interest is that you look out for our interests, so that if there's anything real about this, that those impacts to the city would be considered right up front. I'm not for the gondola, but you can't just say that and not be proactive, and so I'd encourage us to, and we'd like to be involved, whether I'm a mayor or whether I'm just a citizen, we'd like to be right in the middle of it if it gets real.
So Lynn, let me ask you a question. We've not been involved in this process at all, other than to have them stop in and say hi and show us. Is there a gap between the Forest Service and North Ogden City? Does the county own some land there? Because we're not aware that we have some land in there. We was in the opinion this was going to be a Forest Service city project.
Mr. Hall and Mr. Barker, who own land right up to the, right past that, well, right on the hill there, close to our green dump, so yeah.
And that's county?
It's county land.
There you go.
Indeed it is.
Thank you, sir. We appreciate that. Hold on, Commissioner. Go ahead.
So my understanding, Lynn, good to see you. Thank you. My understanding, I have had conversations with Mr. Barker, but that that particular piece of property that he owns would have to be annexed, at least from discussions I have, would have to be annexed into North Ogden, because Weber County would not have the ability to service that particular site. And I would, at least speaking from my seat, say that it would be very difficult for Weber County to assume that responsibility for service unless North Ogden was to annex that in. So in my mind, this is really a North Ogden slash Ogden Valley issue, and from the feedback I'm receiving, it's not well-received on either side of the valley. Being an Ogden Valley person, you know, I again appreciate the input and the discussion brought forward by the people of North Ogden, also Ogden Valley. I think it's a stretch, at least from an economic development standpoint, but from a public perception standpoint, it's probably even less acceptable. But, you know, if we get to that point, which I think is a far, maybe a far point down the road in terms of Forest Service congressional approval, well, obviously, we'll have that discussion, but I probably wouldn't lose any sleep over it right now, at least from what I see. But happy to continue that discussion if this does gain some traction down the road.
You're good. Thank you very much. Thank you, Commissioner Forre. Others?
Nick Sanders, North Ogden resident. You can certainly tell it's an election time, because a lot of the people that I haven't seen at any of the meetings on the gondola are certainly here tonight and ready to talk on it. Now, I've been to six meetings with James Coleman and Mountain Capital Partners. I've been to two meetings, one at the governor's office and one up in Logan. Now, what does fall on your plate and which is important? I'm going to start with a question, actually. What did you decide on designated roadless rules? Remember that meeting we all showed up to, and you guys were supposed to put a recommendation into the governor's office?
This is your time to comment to us.
So you don't have a response to your citizen that you came to see? Okay. Well, that does come on your plate, the designated roadless, and the reason James Coleman has expressed pushing that agenda, because it will come to Weber County, and it will come to you. Now, in those six plans, he's going to take 3,600 acres of not only Forest Service land, but he wants Weber County land, and he wants North Ogden land. Now, so I am going to say I am a little shocked that you guys haven't looked at the plan. I mean, there's been six meetings, and I know the city council here in North Ogden's been here, and they've seen it, so I'm just a little shocked that you guys haven't seen Mountain Capital Partners' plans, particularly because they come on the heels of Josh Richardson's plans, which also came before the county, I know, at some point, when he wanted to expand Nordic, when it was Wolf Mountain. So the second thing I wanted to know, and I guess I can't ask questions, because why would a constituent ask questions? I would want to know dates of when it was pulled, if there was an official date, and to whom, who made the call to you fellas to let you know that it had been pulled? Because I found that it was pulled by doing my own legwork, and actually, because of somebody at the Standard Examiner who's been on it informed me. So I would be interested to know that. The second thing I want to talk about is Randy Marriott has 200 acres he wants to annex into North Ogden. I saw that we had to write a letter of petition by June 12th. That was nowhere on North Ogden's site, nor, I mean, it was on your site in, after you clicked about five million times to find out, that if you wanted to say no to Randy Marriott annexing 200 acres, you had to search high and low to find it. And so now I'm wondering, if we didn't get our letter in, and if people weren't aware of that, does that mean we don't have a say with the Weber County Commission anymore? Because again, you won't take my question here, so I don't know how it works when you write, if you didn't write a letter, if you ever get to petition it. So those are my questions and concerns forward to you guys today. Thanks.
Thank you. Sean?
Yes?
You want to take some of those? I'm of the opinion, I was just talking with Commissioner Harvey, that the Forest Service informed us of that, and we ride along there.
That may be correct for you. Honestly, what she said, she found out in the Standard Examiner, so did I.
Well, they did.
Yeah, that's how I found out that, that...
Well, Commissioner Harvey says the Forest Service contacted him, so I suspect, you know, this is some time ago, so I suspect you simply told us. I really can't get down to the detail of it.
Correct, yeah. Nothing was ever officially presented to our planning division. There's been no petition filed, there's been no application filed, nothing has been given to Weber County. So I understand what Ms. Sanders is saying, as far as, you know, why haven't we been at the meetings or anything, but we have been following on the outside, but nothing that affects the unincorporated area has ever been presented or proposed to us. So that's where we stand.
Sean, isn't it true that there'd be no reason for Weber County, and we're talking about commissioners here, to review or have that discussion prior to Forest Service approval? Because without Forest Service approval, it was a moot issue. So the only time that we would have that discussion would be after Forest Service approval, which has not happened.
That's correct.
So this discussion, I think, is a little off-base to accuse us of, you know, whatever the accusations were, which I'm not quite sure, but our point would have been after Forest Service approval, which has not taken place. Am I correct or not?
That is correct, yeah. Our planning division would have reacted to an application that was submitted to them once all of the other approvals were in place. Otherwise, we're just speculating about what might happen, and frankly, we don't really have time to do that.
Right. Can you also, Commissioner, can you also deal with the annexation question? Because my understanding is that the annexation procedure would have gone through North Ogden, not through Weber County.
That's correct, and if there, yeah, a petition against the annexation would have been filed with the city. That's correct.
Okay, so the roadless issue that we...
Yes.
We have four or five different options we'd like to have.
That's correct, and I believe we didn't even make a recommendation back, because ultimately, and when Sean Harwood presented, our district ranger, he told us, it's really out of your hands, anyway. So the state will ultimately make the decision, regardless of what the county recommends, and after input from our planning commissions, I believe that's what the county commission decided to do.
We have the planning commission, you took the other one.
Correct.
All right. I think that answered all your questions.
I'm happy to answer any others that you have.
Thank you very much. Others who care to address us? Brett, good to see you here tonight.
Julie Sanders, North Ogden City.
Welcome, Julie.
Thank you. I'm glad you guys came out to see us in North Ogden. I previously listened online to your meeting about water and listened to all the people from outlying areas that have water concerns. I own land in West Weber, and developers are chomping at the bit, and I have had a few offers. I really don't, I've looked at their plan, I've looked at the people that live in that area, I've looked at their plan, but I really don't see what the zoning is leading up to, and I'm concerned about water. Second driest state in the nation. At some point, we're going to have to realize that we don't have water for everything we want water for. And it concerns me when we have algae blooms showing up in water that is right in our area and right in our neighborhood, and we want to do things with water, and you're going to have to take into account water shortage and the algae blooms. So those are my concerns. My last concern is with the, what was the nice name you used for the garbage out at the end? Oh, sorry.
This is Promontory Point Land.
There you go. Exactly. Well, that road runs very close to the property I own out there, and I can envision it turning into just a path of garbage. The wind blows, those trucks may or may not care if they're covered. There's no government that's going to go out there and take care of the garbage. I suppose you could count on 4H, but that, for me, will be an issue as well. So thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your comments. Others? I'd like to welcome Senator Christensen here, Mr. Y. Good to have you here tonight. All right, we'll move on to the next portion of our agenda, consent items. First items are on our consent item F1 is warrants, number 1942 through 1960, and number 442005 through 442154, in the amount of $530,329. Item F2 is a request for purchase orders in the amount of $196,133. Item 3 is a request for approval of the minutes, held on August 6th and August 13th of this year. Item 4, F4, is a request for approval of new business licenses. Item F5 is a request for the Weber Morgan Health Department for approval of surplusing of a 2006 Dodge Dakota pickup. I think it's a Dakota, yeah, it's a pickup. Item F6 is a request for Utah State University Extension Services for approval to surplus office furniture and equipment that the county owns. Item F7 is a request for approval to declare parcel numbers 04-042-0070, 04-051-0001, and 05-119-0016 as surplus property. Now, an explanation on that last one, occasionally, we get surplus property in the county that people won't pay their property taxes on, and we take it back on the tax sale. We offer them up, and nobody will bid on them because they're very unusual little pieces. Generally speaking, these pieces are small enough that they're between a couple of lots, they're on the back end of a lot, and we try to get the property owners that are adjacent to these properties to buy them. Once in a while, you end up with just little pieces, and these are three pieces that the Weber County Housing Authority came to us and said, you know, those three pieces of property are small enough that nobody will build a house on, but they're not outside of the limits of Ogden City. So if you would give those to us, Weber Housing Authority, we could build some small housing on it that we can, in fact, rent to low-income individuals. Now, we would have liked to have given to them, but we can't, because the law says that we have to get a fair price. So we are going to give them a good deal, but we can't just give them to them. We told them, you have to pay us the money for it. So we're working on our price right now, but we are going through the process of surplusing those three lots, and Ogden City is working to see if they can approve those three lots for some kind of a house. So that's the explanation of the consent items. Commissioners, any questions? I'm open for motion.
Do you want to go over?
Oh, yes, hold on. Ricky, why don't you go through the warrants?
You bet. And with the chair's permission, I'd like to talk for about 30 seconds on the election results.
Oh, there you go.
That's okay.
Yeah.
Right.
Ricky, why don't you give these folks your title of what you do?
Yes, my name is Ricky Hatch. I'm the county clerk auditor, so I'm in charge on finances as well as elections. Now, you're an election officer for your city elections, like North Ogden. Now, you're an election officer for your city elections, like North Ogden, is your city recorder, and that's Spennlove, but they, North Ogden as well as every other city in the, in the county has contracted with Weaver County to administer the elections. But she is the one that is in charge and is the boss of these elections. We do what she says, as long as it's legal and ethical, and she would never do anything contrary to that. So just giving you some unofficial results that will be official next Tuesday when the city, North Ogden City Council completes the campus report. So these are unofficial results, but they're pretty darn close. Just going to be probably a few ballots that trickle in since, since these came in. Countywide, the voter turnout for this primary was 30 point, sorry, 30.8%, which is quite high for a municipal primary. And we attribute that to some of the things that have been on, that were on the ballot in certain cities, as well as the fact that Utah's a voter's choice state where every active voter is mailed a ballot. The turnout for North Ogden was 37.2%, so North Ogden's turnout was seven percentage points higher than the countywide average. Highest cities, highest city, the city with the highest turnout was the Hooper, Hooper City, which had 43% turnout, and lowest turnout was Harrisville City with 25.8%. One other curious or interesting tidbit is that 95.4% of all votes were either cast by mail or placed in a drop box. Our experience shows that right now, it's about two-thirds of the ballots are dropped in a drop box where you don't have to pay postage, and we have them conveniently located throughout the county. And then the other third tends to be by mail, and so fewer than 5% of all ballots were cast on election day in person. So those are the election results. If you want to look at election results for all the cities in Weaver County, you can go to Weaver County Clerk Auditor's website, or Weaver County Elections, WeaverElections.com is the, is the address that you can go to. So that's summary of the, of the election side. Now let's talk about finances. Every week in our commission meeting, I provide a brief highlight of the checks and purchase orders that were issued for that week. We talk with the commissions, with the commissioners before the meeting. These go through several layers of review, and I perform a final review, and we talk before the commission meeting in detail about these checks. So they've been, they've gone through several layers of review, so I only give the, the highlights. And this was a fairly low-volume week as far as purchase orders and checks, but we like to let the public know at least a little bit of what's going on, and if you want to look at any of the detail, the detail is posted on our website. So this week, we issued 19 purchase orders for $196,000. 79% of that amount, or $154,000, is for the health department, and that will be going to purchase vaccines. They're getting a head start on the flu season, which is coming. 16% or $32,000 is for the conference center, and that will buy, that will purchase concessions as well as some conference, some, some chairs. We wrote 167 checks this week for $530,000. About a fourth of that amount, or $124,000, was transportation tax dollars that really just flow through the county, and these all went to Harrisville City for the 1100 North Street. 16% or $85,000 is for the roads department, and that was to purchase asphalt and road supplies. 8% or $41,000 was for the county sport shooting complex, and that was to remove the asphalt in the parking lot and to replace that in concrete. And then we had two items for 6% or about $32,000. First one was for the library, and that was for purchasing of books and materials as well as performing building maintenance. And then the paramedic fund, we purchased some extracation, or they purchased extracation equipment for $31,000. And that's the report.
Very good. Thank you.
Commissioners? I don't have any questions. Thanks for the report, Ricky. No questions?
Motion.
Very per motion. I would move to approve the consent items. I do have a comment, if would be all right.
Yeah, great.
So I just wanted to make sure that everybody's aware on agenda item dealing with the surplus properties. This was something that's been in discussion with the Weaver Housing Authority. This is basically gives them the ability to create housing for up to three people, and these are small homes. We just experienced in our community, and I think everybody in this room's aware of the extreme makeover. Commissioner Harvey was very much aware, what housing means to people and how that can change lives. I've been in housing all my life, and I understand the importance of housing being a priority for all of us. This will give the ability for people that have no housing at this point in time, or have but below standard housing, the ability to have their own home. And so I want to congratulate and the fellow commissioners for jumping on board. We actually have a Weaver Housing Board member, I don't think Kevin's here, but Gloria's here, that, and she's actually chaired the Olene Walker Housing Authority for the state for two terms, eight years. So she's very well aware of what housing means to our state and our county and our, our community. So I just wanted to make a, a point that this is not a small deal when we talk about surplus property, is what this is going to mean for three families at the end of the day, Commissioner. So I would make that motion.
Thank you. Second. I have a motion, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. I want to also recognize Chris Crockett here from our attorney's office, sitting right next to Ricky. And Fatima, what's your position?
Administrative assistant to Ricky Hatch.
And she takes all our minutes and takes care of all our paperwork, and that's a big deal, so we let you know who we brought with us here tonight, as well as our cameraman.
Cameraman, yeah.
Bill Francis.
Bill Francis. Welcome, Bill.
Smile for the camera, Bill. Oh, wait, you're not on the camera.
All right.
He's on the other side.
Item G1, an action items, request for approval, final reading of an ordinance. You know, I was going to tell you, back to our budget for this, for our pass through that. The county has a ton of pass-through dollars that we get. So when you see robe dollars, robe funds, these are wake hog dollars. Weaver area council of government, that they get from the state of Utah, and we administer those dollars. So we have four or five million dollars a year in wake hog dollars that come through. We have Prop 1 dollars that come through that we administer. We have federal funds that come through our county that we administer, we end up giving to the Weaver Morgan Health Department. So our budget's really big, and you think, "Man alive, you guys are handling a lot of money." We are. We admit that. We handle a lot of money. But we probably generate less than half of it, I'd say. You think that's fair to say, Ricky?
Yeah, 21% of profit taxes could come to Weaver County.
Oh, there you go. So you can see we administer a ton of money that comes in other areas. So it's important what we do. Very good. Back to G1, action items, request for approval, final reading of an ordinance of more Weaver County Commissioners of Weaver County to amend the Weaver County Fee Ordinance, Title 16, Chapter 2, Section 12, and surveyors' fees. Devron Anderson, county surveyor. Good to have you here today, Devron.
Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to come. I don't know if this is inappropriate or not, but if I may, just say a word to the citizens of North Ogden about the county surveyors and recorders office.
Please do that.
Thank you. County surveyors' office and county recorders' office, we maintain the, the infrastructure of monuments that your boundary descriptions are all tied to. And these boundary descriptions for you property owners are very important because that's where the taxes are generated from in the tax assessment process. So as the county surveyors' office, we maintain these monuments, and as county recorders' office, we try to maintain these tax parcel maps that we know are very important, not just for unincorporated county, but we serve all the citizens in the county, anybody that has property, whether it's within the municipality jurisdiction or whether it's in unincorporated county, we provide those services to you. So if you ever have any questions or concerns about those types of issues, please feel free to come down to our office, and we'd be happy to help you as much as we can. All right. Thank you. We are trying to, the county surveyors' office is trying to get our local rules and ordinances that we abide by in line with the state code that was passed this last legislative session with regard to, actually with regard to our monuments and our monument system. So we presented this to you last week, and we had no feedback, positive or negative, on this issue, and so we'd like to move forward with it.
So I might say to you folks who are listening or here tonight, last year, Devron came to us and told us about an issue we had, these, these section monuments that we have out there, so many of them are being knocked over and tipped over when people do construction in the area, moving things, and there were no rules that really regulated that. So Devron come to me, and we kind of set up a little plan for it. Having been a previous legislator, and we got a legislator in to run a bill for us to create a few rules on how we deal with those. And Devron passed the bill last year, didn't he? It was actually way cool to see it and have, watch a guy who was simply working for the county get some rules passed that save lots of problems later on. So this is a result of that. And we're pretty excited about it. Commissioners, any questions about that? We've been through it many times.
Devron did a great job, by the way, down at the Capitol, of making sure that the proper people heard the voice and the reason for this, which was an important issue.
Most people really care about their property lines, and in the Utah Association of Counties of which that we agree with, in the 29 counties of, you know, here in the state of Utah, Devron is respected as one of the best. And so I can maybe on that, so, but I don't have a lot, I don't have any questions. We've studied this, this is the second reading. We've had a chance for quite a bit of debate, and if you're ready, Mr. Chair, I'll make, I'd like to make a motion.
I'm ready.
I would make the motion that we approve the final reading of this ordinance, Title 16, Chapter 2, Section 12, for the surveyors' fees, which would be a.
Devron's ordinance.
Order number 2019-16.
I'll second that.
You have a motion, second. I'd like to make a comment on that. It's interesting, when you get to your property lines, sometimes you're off six inches or eight inches, and it's like, "How does that happen?" Well, it happens. Somebody tipped a monument over, and then they hurry up and set it back up and cover it dirt, say, "Ah, that's close enough." And we're trying to prevent that so that your property lines really are your property lines. And it's, it's good. Devron, you did a great job of that. Very good. I have a motion, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Of roll call. Thanks.
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forre?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Thanks, Fox. All right. Second item on there is a request for approval, the final reading of an ordinance of the Board of Weaver County Commissioners of Weaver County amending the survey and monument ordinance Title 45, and that'd be ordinance number 2019-17. Questions, commissioners?
Questions.
Do you want to make a presentation there, Devron?
Just to say that it's the same reason why we amended the fees, we're just adding some definitions and getting this in line with the county, with the state.
I'm open for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the final reading of ordinance 2019-17, which is the survey and survey monument ordinance.
Second.
I have a motion, second. Fatima?
Commissioner Harvey?
Aye.
Commissioner Forre?
Aye.
Chair Jenkins?
Aye. Very good. Thanks, Devon. Very appreciate you. Next items, number three, a request for approval to ratify contract binding to Weaver County and Mackenzie Anderson to judge the Fiesta 4H show at the Weaver County Fair. Now, this has obviously happened, and this is one that we missed, so we're making up on it. Commissioner Harvey?
Yes, thanks. We're going to actually ratify this contract. This is a contract that was issued before the fair, but was not returned to us, it was returned to the fair, but it didn't make the docket, obviously, in time because of the fair. So this is just a, a simple ratification of this contract. We did the Fiesta 4H horse show, which had a lot of, a lot of entries, a lot of attendance, so it's just basically a housekeeping item. So entertain any questions?
Questions? You ready for a motion?
Yeah. So I would move to approve to ratify the contract between Weaver County and Mackenzie Anderson to judge the Fiesta 4H horse show at our recent 2019 Weaver County Fair.
Second.
And second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
Very good. That's approved. Item 4 is request for approval to ratify, once again, a contract binding between Weaver County and Ken Cochran to judge the all-breed horse show at the fair this year.
Commissioner?
Thank you, Commissioner. You know, a lot of times around here, we favor our quarter horses quite heavily. Some have a few paints, and even fewer, old Frank McCormick that used to be here in North Ogden City, he liked the Arabs. But this was, this is a horse show that we do at the fair where all breeds are welcome. So it was a successful event, and we're just looking to do a little house cleaning here and ratify this contract.
I'm going to make you remember that.
Frank McCormick?
Well, no, not him, but that he liked Arabs.
Oh, well, you had talked to Frank without knowing that he liked Arabs. Oh, holy sacrum.
Oh, that's funny. I used to chase with his kids a little back in the day.
Yeah, I remember that. We won't talk about it, though.
Okay.
Right here in North Ogden.
Right here in North Ogden. Questions, either of you?
No.
I'm ready for a motion. To approve.
Second.
Motion, second. All favor say aye.
Aye.
All right. Short agenda tonight, folks. Commissioner comments? Either of you?
Commissioner, if I could, I'd like, since we have the, our Weaver County Sheriff with us, I'm going to put him on the spot, if I mind. And, you know, the Weaver County Sheriff, and since that's my portfolio deal on a pretty much weekly basis, if not more, with Sheriff Arbahn and his crew, Chief Roundy, and they've got an excellent staff out there. But I would like him to come up because I've had some discussions, actually had a meeting this afternoon where I was able to talk about the VIPS that have helped, that Sheriff Arbahn has come up with, and I think that's important, that we get out to everybody in the community what these volunteers, these are volunteers, that help our police officers, our sheriffs, our deputies in the day-to-day duties, and actually save us as taxpayers a substantial amount of money. So Sheriff, I apologize for putting you on the spot, but that's why you're in the hot seat.
So Sheriff Ken, at the fair, we seen some of your cars there with VIPS.
You did.
Yeah. Go ahead.
All right. So the VIPS program, I'm not sure if I should address yours, and address the best city and residents that are in the county.
Oh, wow.
That's where I live, and most people know that. But we enacted the VIPS program primarily, and I think North Ogden has its own VIPS program, and it's providing very successful returns so far. And the VIPS program has decided not to take place of, but to supplement law enforcement or activities. And for example, I was told just today by Chief Roundy that we had a VIPS volunteer, a mother and daughter, come out a couple of nights ago and to do a volunteer patrol, and they ended up helping Ogden City from 9:00 PM till 6:00 AM with traffic control.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty amazing. And so we, we, we feel inspired that the VIPS program is something that helps us build a better relationship with the community as well, is building trust and saying, "Hey, we're doing everything that we can on our end, but we want to build a better relationship with the community." And we're seeing it take off. It got off to a bit of a slow start, but we've got about 25 to 30 that are active and gone through the background check, and they're pretty anxious and ready to get going. It's, it's, it's been great. We're seeing it throughout all the cities so far, being very active, and it's great. So thank you.
So this helps you in your employee shortage, right?
Yes, it does. It does help that, like I said, we've spent, we, just real quick, Buildings Montana is a huge success story for the VIPS program. They had about 98,000 calls for service in 2017. Their VIPS program handled 20,000 of those calls.
Wow.
And so it's, again, it's not a replacement, but it's something to Ogden. I'm sure there's similar success stories in North Ogden along that line, and I would encourage everyone to participate, including, I think, city council should take a prominent role with North Ogden and the VIPS program. And there's, I'm just saying.
Anything else, commissioners? Thank you. That's my comment.
And thank you. Thank you.
Commissioner Harwood?
Just briefly, for, for many of you that know, and many of you saw on social media and actually on the TV with regards to the Extreme Home Makeover, well, it's the Extreme Makeover Home Edition, those programs, both houses will air on HGTV in January of this next year. But I want to give you just a couple of comments, insider comments from the TV producers I think you might find interesting. For the producer.
When the producer first called, they were going to another community, they weren't coming into Ogden. And the reception was very vanilla. Then the producer decided to call our Ogden Convention Visitors Bureau, and the reception was absolutely warm. Karen Werner there said, we'd love to meet with you and get together with you, and then another local, great community partner, Wattman Corporation, stepped up and said, we'll do those houses. Now, you do those houses without paying. You donate them. The houses were beautiful. But one of the most inspiring things through the production of both houses, the one on 22nd Street, and the other one right across the street from Bonneville High School, the Bonneville High School parking lot and the seminary, it's right there on the corner. But as, as they were just wrapping up the first house on 22nd Street, I learned from one of the supervisors of Wattman Construction, that the siding from front to back on the house, and you think about your own home from front to back, and this is a very narrow, deep lot, so the home was exceptionally deep. So from front to back, the siding, or the material used to face the house, was off, just, he said, was off about this much. And the people from Wattman said, that won't do. Take it off and put it on again. Now, keep in mind that this house was a concrete slab on Friday night, and they turned the house over to the family the following Thursday. So they did all the framing, they did all the plumbing, heating, air conditioning, the electrical, the siding, the backyard with a pergola, a garage, windows, insulation, everything that needs to build a house to move in, to furniture move in, everything. But they said, that won't do. We want to give this family our very best. And I think when you have that attitude, we want to give our very best to those who have the least amount, I think showed great character. So I want to publicly thank Dave Wattman and his team for doing an exceptional job because they cared about this much, and then, which is huge. They cared about correcting this much to the little details. Really a wonderful story. It's great being part of those things.
It is great being part of it. So I'll tell you another story while we're on the, in my comment. We had a chance to walk through that house on 22nd, and we're walking along, and Commissioner Harvey is there, and he happened to be a subcontractor on that job, putting vacuums in. And we're standing there, and Casey Nelson's standing there, and Commissioner Harvey says, you know, Casey, there's supposed to be a vacuum outlet, right there on that wall. But of course, our ears perked right up when he says that, because we don't see any vacuum outlet on that wall. Casey says, really? Where at? He says, well, he gets his knuckle over there, and he starts thumping that wall, and he says, about right there. And he takes a pen out of his pocket and kind of puts it, he says, that's about where it is, right there. Well, we left right after that, but they went back and poked down and found that right out within 10, 30 minutes.
That was cut out, ready for us to trim it. It was painted, the wall was painted, so you can't make a mistake on that. But it was ready to go, and they had it all fixed and done, and it was, it was amazing.
Well, it was amazing. Good thing you couldn't buy.
Well, because they had good subcontractors there, they did it.
Anyway, it was a lot of fun to watch that take place, and you did a good job there. We're grateful to be your county commissioners, and it was a lot of fun to come out here and do these, and feel free to talk to us when this meeting's over. We'd love to address with you, and if there's any concerns that you have that have not been addressed today, would people who are working for the county stand up? There you go. These are the people you feel free to talk to. We're here to talk to you now. Well, with that, I'm ready for a final motion.
Make a motion, your chair. Second?
All favor say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.